Very good, well let's go ahead and get this workshop going. Mrs. Clark, we'd like to invite you up to sit up here with us.
Okay, first of all, I guess this lady, my name is an Innesis away from the high of Innesis away from the morning. Okay, when I first stopped to move George, I was not aware it was likely to be a workshop this is. This is more of a, I'm here just for a few minutes because I do have a doctor's appointment. I'm here to talk to you and see if there's any way we can get Dr. Kinnon to pay for service at work. I don't know, I'm not sure before her or before her.
Understand.
This is Carol Catcall, we started, are you aware of this in 2004?
Yes.
So you know that it's-
I'm more aware of Catson than I ever thought I'd have to be.
Well, I, I did not get involved in this before about three years ago because I was working full time. There are three ladies, two other ladies and myself, who are permanent Peters, seven days a week. So, here and I asking if you can pay for any of the food. The cost is easy, about seventy-five dollars to do. And we can't listen to them, we cannot listen to them. If you're out there, that's very trouble. I think you two are doctors, no. Commissioner, I'm not sure if there was a, in this communication with Dr. Meldes, a misunderstanding with Dr. Meldes. I just know what happened here. But myself and the other two other ladies and definitely has now said it takes too much to respond back then. When we went out and we trapped these cats in services for amendment, I would not have done this. And the other ladies had been not having a stand with people, they, the service. Now, Dr. Carletti has given us a bill for eight hundred and forty dollars, I believe, then, eight hundred and thirty five. One thing, she has known that during Spain, this is tied to, that we do, um, she's been taking that term of residence for the last ten years and all that fact we've known. And one of those cats, that's the same or sick, that we have normally taken care of, she treats him. That's all I have to say, I don't know why this has not been paid, uh, in the shell. We have the dates here, I don't know why, what are the documentation you all need to say that is valid expenditure? I have the letter to the mayor, which you are very familiar with.
I am.
And I would hope, you all know me, I can pay a hundred and thirty dollars off, but I don't think I should have to do that. When I'm spending seventy-five dollars a week, making a package, not running all of every place, having that fund compared with us, and all I'm asking, tell you all if you're a great concern.
Thank you.
Do I have anything else on that?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I think our last correspondence with Mrs. Carletti, we had asked her for where she got the authorization from. And she's saying that I gave her the authorization, but I have never seen any information-
Well, it says here, it seems as if she felt that it was preferable, or I believe in calling around, taking mosquito-infested rats-
Understand.
I hope we have permission to do this since that day.
And that was her letter to, to you or to me?
No, to you, I just- It's just, we have these, it's certainly that had been delivered, and then we changed our new thing to service point.
Well, I will bring it up to the board and we'll discuss it one more time and we will give you an answer.
So is there anything else that you said, you know, that the business, CCA, we have some, I've been out there for ten years, we, missing, all over, and so let's see, my notes are part of, Alice, we have three nurses, we have three cats, and Jane, you can just pay it all, as the mayor of North State.
Just as an aside, so you're saying you pay seventy-five dollars a week, is that all three of you individually, or is it seventy-five dollars divided by three?
No, we buy twenty-two pound bag of permanent cat food, that does a day and a half remain, and I buy kitty cat food, it's a case of twelve, and it's eight days a week, so it costs about seven dollars. And the boxes that we build for protection for, the straw that we buy, put in your boxes. I, I, it's still a situation we don't care for and what happens. I don't make any cats, we take care of them, we see their health, many, there's a, you know, where they need to keep them warm. Over the Christmas holidays, there was a big group to cats, I could, all prayed in my sorrow, and just have those cats on twelve days, and when I'm home, I've got a cat out there now with both legs, and I take care of them. We're, we're not asking for a whole lot, we do this in the temperament, we pay for it. We're out there in the community where it's not safe, this place for three ladies today, you all know, and I'm very thankful that Mr. Corning and John Peters, security goes with us now, I'm very thankful for that. And while I did, it's only eight hundred and thirty dollars, and, and it just seems that we did the work, bought it, it approved, and-
Thank you.
And I apologize to you all for taking your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
I regret not putting anything in the paper, thank you.
Okay, next up, Bay Area inspection, come on down.
It just causes trouble, okay? My kids don't, they don't approve of me feeding cats, they don't approve of me being out there where the homeless, and the dark cats are all, and-
Okay. Yes, that's right. You guys introduce yourselves to, to the board, I'm sure you may know everybody, but it wouldn't hurt.
My name is Wayne, I'm the owner of Bay Area Inspection Agency, this is my father-in-law, he was former owner of Bay Area Inspection Agency. He is still currently the chief inspector, the staff inspector, as you can see right here, he has a lot of experience. Anyway, hopefully the commissioners and the owners see my letter that I sent in reference to the inspection process in Elkin and Cecil County, just as a recap for many years-
And review it one time for us, we're on the camera and whoever's at home would probably like to hear how the process works.
So historically, for many years, Cecil County has, the electoral inspection process has been done by a third-party inspector. The county and the town does all their other inspections themselves, but electrically they've always used the third-party. And for many, many years, for as long as they've had inspection, they've always had a single agency as their, that was oversaw by the Cecil County Electrical Board.
Yes.
So, some years back, there was some thought that maybe that wasn't the best way to go. And there was discussion between the Contractors Association, the county commissioner, former government at that time, and permits inspections in Cecil County. And the three options were a single agency, multiple agencies, or ranking in-house and have governmental inspectors. They, like I said, it was quite a bit of discussion, I think all groups concerned, no one wanted to go with governmental inspection, owing for the fact that there was, it would drive the cost of government out. The Electoral Board, or multiple times, recommended using a single agency because they have, they would have so much control and oversight over a single agency. The Contractors Association also, the majority asked for a single agency as well, some wanted to go multiple agencies. At that time, the county commissioners decided to go with multiple agencies, at least try it. And how long have we been doing it, five years maybe? Four, five years, we've had multiple agencies in the county. When it started, any agency that, any agency that was qualified, certified, and were going to be qualified, you have to be certified by the state fire marshals.
Wayne, how many agencies right now are in Cecil County?
There were three, we are now down to two. One agency was asked to leave due to passing work that wasn't completed. And the biggest concern from the Cecil County Electoral Board and permits inspection was the public safety was, they felt the public safety was being compromised.
Okay.
Currently, we have two agencies in the county and in the county of Elkin. Rising Sun, being their hometown, has elected to go with a single agency. We currently serve Azure and Suns, all that inspector, we do all their renovations, fire investigation, things of that nature, and we perform all the electrical inspections inside the town of Rising Sun.
Okay, and what does that, and, so what happens with new construction that happens in the town of New, in Rising Sun, would you handle that?
Right now, all of the building permits go through the town of Rising Sun. When the electrical contractor comes on board, the town administrator of Rising Sun will say, Bay Area Inspection Agency does our electrical inspection, you need to come down to Cecil County. They come to our office, and the town of Rising Sun has asked us to collect a fee for the town as well. So, you apply for a permit, an electrical permit, we give to you, and the town gets a flat fee of forty dollars for every inspection that the contractor pays us, and we collect it from the town and send it over on a monthly basis.
Okay.
I will say, I mean, I'll let you finish your presentation, but in 2010, I was, remember, running for the county board seat, and this came up as a big issue for the electrical department. Really hurt a lot of the personal contractors that were in electric business. I do know that, I was totally against it because it took a lot of work away from our own private business owners that had owned electric business companies. I'm listening to your presentation, but I really, back in that time, I think it really cut a lot of work away from people that were, that worked their way through the system for electrical work, and then all of a sudden it was given to an organization or a group. And again, my, my feeling was, it was a bad group in the beginning, so I'm just listening to you.
Okay, sure.
It's my opinion, sure.
What was it in? I don't know.
It took a lot of contractors that were already worked through schooling, college, to get these degrees to work on the electric business that were available. And then when we moved it into the, the groups, the two or three groups that were, it took away a lot of work from the private.
I don't pay for the same page-
Okay, well maybe I'm-
Electrical contractors, anyone who-
Didn't the county take that over?
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I-
Yeah, I think you're referring to electrical workers and electrical inspection.
Yeah, okay, well I'm glad to clear up. I was already going to overweigh it.
I didn't think we were on the same-
Okay, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Just so we're clear, anyone who's a master electrician and holding a master electrician's license in the state of Maryland can do work in Cecil County. Electrical inspections can only be performed by one of the two agencies that the county has allowed.
And I, and I know for, going back to when, when I served the first time, Wally, you, you were the electrical inspector for the whole county, and that was up till, what would you say, 2010, 2000?
Yeah, something like that.
Up to 2010. And then I know that your agency would give a pro-rated amount of money back to each town and municipality at that time, based on the work that was going on within the town. So in 2000, let's say 10, the county opened it up, that they allowed multiple inspection agencies, because quite frankly, they probably thought that giving it, that authority to one person was probably not the right thing to do, but now they're kind of probably seeing it the other way, that when you have three or four different groups, where the county is kind of, the Electric Board is overseeing, they're seeing a lot of flaws.
Well, you know, it was, it was very political, very political.
I know it was.
And in fact, the only reason we changed it was I inspected a job, and then I found violations and electrical issues, and I made my inspection and my findings, and then things went down.
You were doing your job.
And you know, that's the way it is. I think that everybody in this room knows of us, you know, we're the biggest and biggest towns, and we try to be religious and maintain some sort of integrity. I think I tried to help you with the boys club or girls club, and, and no cost. I think that I lived in this county sixty-eight years, two years in Brooklyn, don't hold that against me. But I, you know, with just about all of you here, Earl, I've seen business, I'm sorry, but I don't know-
John, we're here to speak.
You know, I don't want to steal any of his thunder because he is behind the business, and I'm, like you said, I'm a little on the, along the tooth side, and I'm here for him. But I want you to go on with the public safety and how many-
Yeah, our concern right now, in the last five years, the, we're charged, our greatest responsibility is public safety. And I, I, my opinion is in the building trade, the most dangerous part of the trade is electricity, whether it be fire, shock, whatever the case may be. And we have seen, in the last five years, public safety in this county and in our town go backwards. On multiple occasions, I take Chip from frequently, Chris Ellison, they'll call me and say, hey, we have a problem. I can say, we had problems this other day, and then we have a generator that was being run in the town. I was in Fort positive, called me and said, hey, I need someone here right now, so we came up and we salted with the town. And that's, that is a relationship that we want to continue to have. You know, my business is located at 224 East Main Street, in the town. When the town needs something, I think it's my responsibility. I'm a stakeholder in the county and in the town. I own 222 East Main Street, so I have an ax to grind in the town of Elkin. I want to be as safe as possible. Do I think we are now? No. And I just, as an aside, and this is not Catson's, what, two days ago, a contractor came in and said, and he's used us exclusively, said we're doing some work in the town of Elkin, and he said, I'm sorry, but I can't use you on this job. Can't use me on this job, but it's your choice. It's because it won't pass, it doesn't meet code. And he said, another agency will pass. And he said, I'm not a choice, because homeowners property, they're not willing to fix what's required to be fixed. I said, okay, I said, you know, on your conscience, if something should ever happen to that house, it burned down, whatever the case may be, but that's where we are. And that's only the situation that I know about. You know, how many times does it happen where things are being passed, or that should not be passed?
Let me say something. I was in the court, it was quite a few years ago, and the normal procedure is if you touch it, you get it, okay? In other words, you go to service, you do something, you come in and it's, it's all passed for code. Well, when I went in and looked at this job, it was for code, but there was some violations, and a fire occurred, and it got sticky and we went to court. And the judge said to me, why didn't you do something about these violations? I said, sir, I'm there to look at what contractor asks me to look at. He looked at me and he reviewed me severely, he said, are you a professional? I said, yes, sir, I think so, I hope so. And he said, it's your duty, it's your responsibility to write every violation you see. Now it's up to the homeowner, property owner, whether they want to fix it or not. But he said, you are charged, you are deep down to cite these things that you see that could have been taken. And from that time on, I was a little bit more astute, a little bit more aware of what we looked at, but still, we can't ask you to fix something. But now is when so far that we're not even allowed an ability to look at some of these things. You change a service outside, you go inside to a piece of equipment, and I'm not inside to look at it. This is against public safety. But because the authorities that they, whether they were the captain of the county or whoever, they say, only look if it's your responsibility. But yet, it comes back to us, if you go to service and I don't look at the panel, because you only changed the meter socket, then I don't know whether you have a hundred amps, two hundred amps, in a load center with a fifty amp wire.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Okay, now, these are the kind of things that didn't occur. But when you get multiple, look when they're, look when you get multiple, they occur because there's an old saying, honey, I don't give violations. And I'm not throwing rocks at anybody, that, that's a known fact, we're, we're surrounded by it. Pennsylvania had multiple, Louisiana had multiple. It's a real detriment of public safety. It doesn't let us do our jobs, because we can't compete with an agency that doesn't meet the code. It's like, and, and, you know, and if you want to talk about money, well, I'll let you talk, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think most importantly, as an inspector, we cannot view the contractor as our customer. That just can't be, because our customer is the public. Mr. Mayor, you're the contractor, I'm going to do an inspection.
I'm hiring you to pass it.
I'm going to be, that's exactly right. And that can't be, because, and if I don't, you're not going to use me a second time.
I'll use you again.
Exactly. So, my customer needs to be the public, the county, and the town. And because that's what, that's what I should be paid to do. And as far as the, there has been comments before that we were too expensive. The Cecil County Electoral Board set our rates forever. They set the rates, we, we have never set our rates. They would set the rate, they were approved by the Cecil County Electoral Board, and we charged accordingly. When we had competition, and you could charge any rate, well, our rates really went up to one down, we kept them the same, because we set our rates many, many years ago, and we haven't changed them for-
To six, oh six.
To those six, our rates have not changed, and nor do we plan to change them. So, the argument that money drove this, I don't believe it is factual, and I can tell you this, if the town decided that they wanted to go in the direction of the same way you see, I know there's problems for the town, that the town has financial vulnerability. I know that, you know, the town would like to build a youth center. You came to me and said, we're building this for the kids, I said, not a problem, I'm going to do that inspection, and that inspection, not in the cross show down, because I have a stake in this town, we have a stake in this town. So I don't, I don't believe money would be an issue at all. You'd allow me more than willing to work with the town in, in any situation like this.
Well, we have.
Well, that's true, we do have an issue with that, right?
Well, listen, I, I think this was a great conversation, I think it needed to happen, and Wayne, I know we brought it up a year ago, and, and you and I had discussed it, and I took it to the administration side, and took it to the building inspector side, and, you know, we had some thoughts about the competition side, and I think it did, I think it did you a lot of justice bringing it here, talking about public safety, and, and there's a reason why there's not, to me, that's, if it's a free market, there's, you would think there'd be ten inspection agencies out there trying to, to gain this business, and it, it falls down to where you got, you're down to two right now, and, and listen, we want to, we want to make sure we're doing the right job. And in my opinion, you guys have always been at a very high level, I've known you for years, and I know where my position would be on this moving forward, and I don't have any other questions for you. Does the board have any questions?
No, I feel, you know, you hear the Granger name, and it's very well respected in this community, and you hear, you know, Granger Electrical, it's just put it together, so I, I feel the same as the mayor, so.
I told you you had a brother, man, John. I sit in the office, I go to your brother, and I'm, that's my, you got a brother, right?
Yeah, I have three brothers.
Lou, what, what issues or concerns do you have with this?
Well, one of the concerns I have is that right now, we have a million and one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar contract for our wellhouses, the inspection is done by American inspection agency, because the contractor, the contractor sub picked them, so I'm not sure how we borrow a contractor or sub from using any other-
And who picked them? And the contractor picked them?
Contractor, Whickersham in this case, picks an electric company to do the work. Because Curtis, I'm not sure. Anyway, I can't remember how it went, but they picked the inspection agency, because we recommended Bay Area when we had our reconstruction meeting, then later I found out that it was American, I don't know American. We brought up on a, on a diet of that man right there, so.
Well, listen, is American the other group?
That is the other group. And I can think that if, we did not price the job, so if, if it was a matter of price, and we knew the talent involved, then certainly that would not have been an issue, so I don't know why we didn't get a chance, that's either here or there.
See, we didn't, we didn't put the electrical work out for bid, we put the contract out for that. Whickersham was the little bidder on the contract, they bid, they sub-bid, I guess, their own subs, and their subs pick whoever they want, we don't control that.
Why, no, we have a-
So we don't know what the clause was.
Yeah. We have a relationship with W. Alford, where we fax these, in their scope of work, when they'll put a scope of work out to their electrations, it will dictate, once it became all agencies, in their scope of work, it would say, your electrical inspection agency shall be Bay Area Inspection Agency, because of the relations. So, you can certainly do something like that at the town. We know the town of Elgin is doing this right now, Rising Sun has it, and Cleveland, the city of Wilmington, when you do an electrical inspection, or when you do an electrical job in the city of Wilmington, you have choices about nine different agencies. They have found that it's so poorly done, the city of Wilmington has decided the direction they want to go in, they're interviewing the inspection agencies to decide their own work agency, because they have oversight. And then there's no risk of, have my job or you want the next one.
You know, these different contractors, in all fairness, Cecil County, we don't have any real big contractors, anyway, and they do go out, and like Lou said, they pick their own agency. Well, stop and think about this for now. I'm a big contractor in Wilmington, and I use you, so my, I'm going to use you too, because we have some sort of liability, just like we do. Let me say one thing, the hospital- Let me say one thing, the hospital, Christiana Hospital, that's one agency because they have found multiple agencies don't work. They, how they came to which one, like Lou was saying, you know, I don't, I don't know how they come to which agency they're going to use. Alls I can say is that's, they, there's many places that have one agency. In deference to us, we live here, we work here, we own here. We, when my dad was running things, he made, you know, the problem was the old agency. And he said, "You will not bring a car from Delaware," because they gave us cars. I used them. And he said, "You will not bring a car here that isn't licensed in this state because we want the revenue to stay in this state. We want revenue." That's all I'm saying.
Very good. Charlie, have any comments, questions?
No, I don't want to get them. Very good.
I can make one last comment. Before I came before you, I didn't want to waste your time or my time, so I spoke to Chip because as the director of, of building, I figured if Chip's against this, then I, you know, he'll do what we need to do. And I felt like I spoke to Chip, I felt the grip, and he just would make the decision. Know that your home is for you and, you know, the state agency's got to do. Because of the relationship and the integrity that my dad, my grandfather started with, my dad continued it, but I wish I could do it.
Very good.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Lou, put it on the agenda for Wednesday and all.
I think before you do that, I think you want to have a submitted agreement for this exclusive service.
I think we do have one.
We do have one, with the county, somebody has.
Well, why don't you submit it to council and he can review it. Because if you vote on it, you know, you should vote on a agreement and determine their oath.
I'd rather it just be fairly.
Okay.
So, if you can get something to Mr. Downs, then, or get it to me, I'll send it along.
By what way?
Uh? Just PDF it to me today.
Did you want us to take, I had something else, but it didn't.
I mean, I wouldn't say with this like that, but you have my email anyway.
I do.
But I do, but there's, just in case. Please, PDF me a.
Thank you for giving us the job.
Thank you.
I think we have a positive consensus.
Hey, he can't, he can't outdo you.
If you have any questions or concerns, feel free to call me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Todd Frye and Mr. Perry Lewis, you want to come down? Perry, are you involved in this one?
I don't know, am I?
Yes, you are.
How are you doing today?
All right. Hey, Perry, see, I found a big, uh, PA guy on four times.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I'm not used to driving that, used to driving that.
I'm doing fine. Yeah, I got rid of one, then he threw from side to back to the front.
It's like FBI, it's like FBI, why you change your mind and why those things.
Yeah, it is. You're ahead of it. Somebody's got to. I apologize in advance. I've got two buildings that will have to be buried out. I'm monitoring my phone here.
Yeah.
You called to George Rex, he was saying prayer.
Yeah, I think the plus is they're on their way to their business in day one.
Wrap up the year. All right, give us some good news here, Todd. Don't want to lay it on us. Where are we at?
Over the past several months, Brian Morgan, my office has been working with Perry. This is kind of cool. I've been working with Gene and Louis. Come up with a parcel structure available work with both the school and town for carving out a piece within their existing administration building parcel produced by the town or the rec center. Over the past few months, we've been working through an issue with getting the family to come into the deeds and the recorded plans for this area were a little bit jumbled. There's a lot of that squared away. We've done that. Once we got that squared away, we'd already done a concept plan for the rec center building itself. So, last step was to come up with a parcel that would meet the needs of the town, be acceptable to the public. So, we, we've done this to team last week and looked at it mainly from a perspective of making sure it's large enough for what town we did, met those any requirements of the town, gave the town and the school work the flexibility we needed.
Hey, Chip.
So, what we have here is shown is.
Hello.
Existing parcel of work in West.
Chip.
Is this overall large parcel up here for us? The piece we're looking to carve out is the shaded area here. And this is where the post building's located and existing parking lot here would be sending an access aisle to this park on site. The initial access for the, the rec center, once it's constructed, would be off of commission of Stockton Street here, existing entrance here, as well as existing entrance off of Booth Street. If funding ever came available, the ultimate idea would be to rebuild Collins Street, make it wider, make it large enough for a true access and make that the access into this site as well as serve the existing county cultural development. Just to give you an idea from a perspective of what's there today. City agency, building, all the parking access aisles, there would be existing access, it goes out to Stockton Street and then there would be an entrance off of Booth Street. And we would be tying into the existing parking lot here for the access to the rec center and the rec center building would be here. This little stuff here is really just me, the zoning requirement. For five hundred, we have a minimum forty foot of, of furniture. Actual access would be coming through, this is the existing entrance off of Stockton Street or Booth Street with ultimately, we have the tying in there. So, as a part of this agreement with the public school, we'll need to develop a cross-access shared maintenance agreement for this location as well as that over there. But this point, we want to just get your feedback on the parcel shape and whether it's something that's acceptable to the town.
The proposed parking, where is that located?
On this plan.
Yes.
Basically, we would have to eliminate two faces here, which we're bringing out of the end, and then there's six faces opposed here, eleven across here.
And I guess we'll amass them with the proposed parking disturbed current parking.
Sorry, say again?
I'm saying with the proposed parking disturbed the carrot parking. I mean, the Board of Education, I know, well, it's not so big back there, I guess what I'm saying, where they park currently to go into the building, the, the proposed building's going to be somewhat adjacent. So, that's what I'm saying, the parking, would that, or maybe would the carrot parking extend to the proposed parking?
They're interconnected. I'm, I'm speaking.
Yeah, they're interconnected, but our, you know, our, our assumption here is that this rec center is going to be using all the parking that, that Booth Street when we're gone.
Okay.
So, we, you know, we bake it four thirty in the afternoon or five o'clock and we're gone and then it becomes, you know, useful in the evening hours, afternoon hours and weekends.
Right.
Got both, both extensions of those two parking areas.
That's a nice little question.
What percentage of the parking that's under the surface is using the rec basis? Are you using the majority of that or is there?
Yeah, more the back, the two back parcels than the front now. Maintenance used to use the front parcel there when we had utility, you know, guys parking their personal vehicles there and hitting the board and operating trucks. But if you go to there today, there may be four cars out front because everybody's in Bay Union. But the back portion there, when we don't have a system-wide meeting, I would say it's probably fifty percent full.
So, even during times where we're not, there's not necessarily concern how.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's the kind of thing where the credit union, you know, Friday afternoon, you might have a run on the credit union, pick up ten or twelve cars there or fifteen in increments, but, you know, there's, you know, we have a, we have an instance where we have a system-wide meeting for principals, something like that. Yeah, we'll fill it up, but.
Is, is there a possibility that if this comes to fruition, that the back part of the parking that, where the credit union uses right now, if that could be extended out a little bit?
Well, right, right now, I mean, if, if the accessway goes back out to Bevel Street, we would probably talk to the town about connecting that credit union parking to that, that easement there to allow for that, a sort of a loop traffic pattern if you will to come out of, so nobody's getting, getting bottlenecked there at the Stockton Street exit. So, I, I think that does this credit union, I think they'd be happy to have that happen and it's so close, I would imagine it not being a false.
Makes it much more accessible for all.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you know, we, we've been there for years and years, as long as I've been there since nineteen seventy. People still cut through there around the back of the building to get out of Stockton Street. I don't think we're able to eliminate that, but the more cars we have parked in parking lots, it seems to slow people down, right?
Well, I think our ultimate goal would be to get that Collins Street extension done.
Right.
It's, it's a straight shot in. It makes sense. And I, I know, Lou, you've kind of preliminary looked at it. It's a.
My, my idea was to eliminate Collins and, and come straight from South Street because you have alignment with South Street, send South Street up to connect here. However, we would have a purchase through about ten properties in there.
Well, actually, that wasn't that many years ago to come across that way anyhow. So, this might make it real.
That's why I cleaned it. I mean, I saw the sketch that, that was pretty good.
I would say, once we get this declared surplus and we take this over, I think that we're moving forward with that Collins Street or South Street extension, however we can make that.
I had went through the Department of Transportation State Highway Administration for the use of highway user funds to build and construct and acquire that property. And they approve that. I can use H R money for that. So, we have a source. Of course, the downside of that is you remove that source of uses because you only have a very limited amount of money. But I think we might be able to construct that with, with the surplus we have in H R money currently, you know, maybe, I don't know, I'm not a patchy number, but we do have the source of money, right, of taxidermy, right?
How, what's our next step?
Well, as I understand it, Brian has a description, Meats and Downs description, that he needs to send to the board's counsel, Mr. Scott. Once the, he writes that resolution, he presented to our board, they approve it, then it goes to the state board where the acting superintendent, the state superintendent will act on it and then it becomes surplus to turn to the county. At that point in the discussion between.
Who else in the county?
You and the county. But, you know, my last discussion with them was they're just waiting for it. We are a little bit ahead of that term on the maintenance building. Mr. Scott already has the description and is writing the resolution that's at his feet. I'm hoping to take that to the July, when we, if he can get this one accomplished that soon, then we'll take that to the July, our July, when we as well. And we'll get, you know, we've done with the, at least the local board's all participation. I hope we discuss it with Dr. Devine, you know, the, the state superintendent, the interim superintendent, Mr. Smith will be leaving at the end of June, but Mrs. Sam will just now take over the role. I believe she'd know it would be a, would be a problem to have that statement approved as well. I just really want to apologize to the, well, I'm.
Well, listen, it went from leasing from the school to declaring it surplus property and we're doing the right thing.
You know, we had to have a title search done too because there was some discrepancies along the, along the perimeter fence line. And then there's this one piece of property going out to Stockton Street there. I think that would be a problem. This right now, I, we could represent this to the board and do what we can.
I'm excited. Are you excited, Earl?
Yes, sir. Can't jump the wire.
Well, thank you, guys, so much. I, I don't know if you even have any questions on this. I mean.
I want to thank Perry for all the help he's helped us out to middle school. I remember when the lights were dim, remember the lights was dim in there?
Yeah, it was very.
Couldn't see, couldn't see. I remember it took him about one week to get things together and people thought they had a whole new school. Thanks for stepping in there for safety. I appreciate all the help you've given as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd.
I think you should briefly, I'm going to read up to the next meeting and council. I have time to address Jason, Allison, and maybe a couple little things, but I'm going to speak to council later.
Yeah, there were, there were two changes. Have you previously seen this at all?
I don't think I've seen it.
I just got this sent over to me, I wanted to get it, I was in number. I'm, I'm, pardon me, to say, you are. I had, had Jason Hall, where he entered that note, which had to do with the contractor, personal, however they're going down, talks about, if you're not having, or these county employees, paragraph six deals with disciplinary issues and basically clearly it's not the town's responsibility, you know, you'll deal that, but this word.
I didn't read this.
The way it was worded, it seemed to me at some point, all these people would get a speeding ticket or some such thing and then use the, that's written, as saying the town had no authority to enforce their traffic laws or, so I just haven't changed up word for it, so we didn't have a good feeling for it. I think it was a hint of everybody just having, having, having.
No compensation involved.
Well, thank you. Lou, it's, it's, it's all right to talk a little bit about this process of the new commissioner going to this workshop, isn't it? Hope the meeting. All right, very good. And I just wanted to make sure, since it wasn't on the agenda, but it doesn't really, I guess necessarily matter. We're up to, I think, fifteen or sixteen candidates as we speak for the position of town committer. And I guess with us having the June fifteenth meeting coming up next week, my thoughts were, and we went ahead, and every person that has interest in being involved, we sent out a packet to them with a financial disclosure form as well as a letter from, from the town stating that we're going to have a meeting on June fifteenth and that we're going to give them an opportunity to speak in front of the public, starting at four o'clock. If that works for everybody, I think that's the way we're going to move it, four o'clock, starting at four o'clock next Wednesday. And we'll have the sixteen candidates come into the room and alphabetically, they would have five, ten, twelve minutes to speak to each one of you. Every candidate that has approached me, I have asked them to contact everyone individually and tell you why they would like to have that position. But I think by them coming in front of the public, if there's any public here at four o'clock, they'll get to, get to see and hear what they have to offer also. I think, I, I can tell you, I'm extremely pleased with the list of candidates. I'm, I'm so happy to say, I never thought that there would be this much interest in an open seat and I'm glad that we're doing it the way that we're doing it. I think it's going to show that it was a very, the correct way to do it. I mean, we could easily buy the charter, went into the room and, and determined what person we wanted and voted and, and made it happen. But I think by doing it the way that we're doing it is the right way to do it. And it's actually, whoever this group does choose, it gives me and us fifteen other names that we can choose for future boards to serve the town of Elton. And I know that we always have opportunities for vacancies on our boards. And I would really, I was, I've been surprised that out of the sixteen, maybe five or six. And I could probably tell you their names, but I really don't think it's appropriate for me to mention their names. You'll see them next week or if they reach out to anybody. I think it's great that we've got some young people. And I think that's a good, I mean, it's, I think it's great that they're showing some interest in our town. Because it will be their town for years and years and years to come. But I can tell you, every candidate that has put their name in is a very good candidate. I think we'd be proud to choose any of those fifteen or sixteen, I don't know what the exact number is, any of those candidates, I'd be very proud to sit with, so. It's the good news. So I think the way the process will work on Wednesday, the fifteenth, and Lou, you'll have to correct me, because if we decide to close the meeting and go in and discuss the candidates, and if we decide that night that we're gonna choose that candidate by vote, is that, are we supposed to make our vote back in public?
You have to, you have to do your appointment in public.
Have to do the appointment, so it necessarily, so if we go into the...
First you gotta administer a oath of office.
So we're gonna go in and we'll get a consensus of that person.
What you don't, you don't win, you could go into a closed meeting and make your decision. And you don't have to announce your decision at that point, you could announce it at the next meeting. The only caveat I would have is that we wouldn't know who it is, so we have to do a oath of office, you know. In the norm, that wouldn't really make any difference if you just did it at the next meeting.
How, so, do you think that we are, would we be ready to make a decision Wednesday? Wednesday night and move on with it, or do we...
I'd rather wait the week itself.
Wait, wait till July?
The first meeting in July, maybe to do the official...
Because I think with sixteen candidates, you have an awful lot to digest. Because each of them are gonna come, basically, I guess, to discuss why they want it. And I don't know, did you plan to tell them when the appointment's gonna be made? And I guess also, you would probably tell a candidate that you're not entertaining any question. I know a lot of time when you are interviewing and they tell you why they want the job and you say whatever. And they might say, when you, I may issue a question or something like that, which we can't.
Then our, then, and, and so if we are officially, then, I'm saying that we'll close the, on the fifteenth, on the fifteenth is the last day for anyone to submit their names for that position. So we'll hear all the candidates, so truly, we don't even need to have a closed meeting then.
You would, you would discuss it at July six meeting, and we'd have time to...
That's what I say we do.
To digest.
Because if we're not gonna appoint anyone, I don't want, I don't want to discuss it and have it in limbo for two weeks. Because we're gonna be, actually, it's probably longer than two weeks, isn't it? From June fifteenth to August sixty. It'd be three weeks and I don't think it'd be right for us to know the person and not announce it for three weeks. Does that make sense? So we won't even discuss till it'll be... What do you think? Or do you think...
Well, I, I'm just wondering if we are going to discuss it so that we can invite the person to the July meeting if you're making the appointment and swearing in the office.
So between June fifteenth and July sixth, if we, if we make our decision in that meeting, I'm just saying you're gonna be lobbied by sixteen people between June fifteenth and July sixth. That they don't know if they've got it or don't have it. And we're leaving them hang out there for three weeks. You're gonna get a lot of phone calls from people saying... I'm just coming through.
Yeah, it's, um...
But I agree with Charlie, it's, we, there's a lot to digest.
Yeah, we might not have enough time hearing sixteen people from four till seven o'clock meeting.
But if we don't, but if we don't make a decision, they're gonna lobby on us for three weeks prior to that July six meeting on, now that the public will know who is the candidates. Not only are we gonna get calls from the candidates, you're gonna get additional calls from their supporters, who's gonna support those individuals, good, bad or different, there's nothing wrong with that. I'm, I'm okay either way.
Michelle, what do you think?
Thank you. I think you'd go with the original plan of closing the meeting afterwards because it is all fresh in your mind. At least talk about everything while it's fresh in your mind. You don't necessarily get your consensus that evening. At the end of the day, you will have made up your minds, you'll announce it in the beginning of July. And the candidates are either going to, I don't think they're gonna change your minds, I think we're all going to decide that night.
But when they lobby, that's true, you've already made your decision or reached a consensus with them.
Well, why couldn't we come back? If we make, if we reach a consensus, could we reopen up and at least announce it and then swear them in in July?
I, I think that's...
If we make our consensus.
Because, you know, when you're sworn in to office, their family wants to come for pictures. And if we have all sixteen candidates come back and then you're choosing one, you know, it's kind of, I would like to inform them ahead of time.
Get formal on that.
That, that, yeah. And then that they're, they could invite their family.
Or, or we could, we could have a special meeting the following Wednesday.
There's nothing in the charter that says what to do, what to...
I mean, we could, we could have... Well, let's go, let's go with that thinking. Let's go with the thinking that we're gonna have them in here, we'll have, we'll listen and, and let's see if we come to a consensus. If we have a consensus, we'll come back and re convene the meeting. It might not be until eleven o'clock that night, but we'll re convene the meeting. We can make, we'll call the person that we chose and, and we'll swear them in in July. How's that sound? That sounds like the plan. Okay, anything else to bring to the table? This meeting is closed.